Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to call the Victoria County Council meeting for Monday, December 11th to order. Just a couple of quick housekeeping items before we start. One is, we asked you to speak up today. We have a new streaming platform that we're using. So you don't have mics. The only mic we have is the one that's located in the center of the seats that are here, or presenters as well. When we get to you, we'll ask you to speak up then clearly as well. So with that, just prior to that, we would like to acknowledge this meeting is held in Unnamadi, one of the seven traditional districts of Migmadi, an ancestral and unceded territory of the Migmadi people. So with that, the agenda has been circulated to you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Councilor Patterson?
Thank you, order. Yeah, just a brief report on the NSFN's Public Safety Advisory Committee.
We will put that under Committee Reports.
Okay, thank you.
We will accept your report at that time. Any other additions or deletions? Can we have a...
I'm willing to adopt the agenda with the change.
It has been moved by Councilor Beal. We accept the agenda with the notice of change. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Understood. Motion is carried. Just before we welcome our first guest, we did have a meeting prior to in-camera meeting, prior to council this afternoon, and there were two recommendations that came out of that, so we need a motion to accept the recommendations that were recommended in the in-camera session.
Excellent.
It was moved by Debbie Ward Daphne, Secretary of Council, Longa. All in favor?
Aye.
Understood. Motion is carried. Recommendations that we approved. So we are pleased this afternoon to welcome a number of new and a couple of previous village commissioners. So we have a chair, Jennifer McDonald is with us this afternoon. She made a presentation at the Happy Village. And we have some commissioners as well, so I'm going to welcome not only you, but your fellow commission folks as well. So if they want to join you, it's up to you. And I'll let you introduce them to you, or I'll get you to introduce them to us, and then we'll do an introduction from our...
Sure, I do have a PowerPoint too, so maybe we'll get that left. And you can blame you, Trump's a product of my presentation skills, because he's my teacher. And I'm pretty sure it was the first public speech I ever had to do, so we can all call that.
That's a comfort, I would say.
Can I put this now in presentation? Uh, no, we can just go here. It's like, we just don't have to look at... There, that's all right. All right, so first of all, thank you, council and staff for having us. We appreciate that you guys have done a lot of light work for the village over the last little while, and that certainly has not gone unnoticed. So first, we want to extend our appreciation for what you, the councilors and the staff have done to sustain and maintain the village through a significant difficult time in its history. So we're here to recognize that, and we're also going to share a little bit of what we've been doing to move forward. And we're really hopeful, yeah, we're really hopeful that we can move forward in terms of collaborating with the county and making it sort of a much more back-and-forth relationship. So I'm going to do some introductions, and then I'm just going to give you a basic overview, kind of a show and tell of the general operation, some of the infrastructure, where our focus has been on the village, and where it's going to be going forward. So, sitting beside me, I'm Jen McDonald. That's Lauren, who had to introduce me. This is Gary Crowder, he's the vice chair. The reps today, Kendra Hinn and Dan McNeil, they are at their day jobs. You will notice that there are only four of us on the list. We have space for five. Commissioner Flaherty, who was elected in August, she and her family moved off the island, so we do have a vacancy. We did have a nomination period that just recently closed. We had no nominees, so we'll put that through again. This position that's up is only actually, not even a one-year position. It expires at our annual meeting in June. So it's a very short-term position. And if we don't get someone seeking that position through this round of nominations, then under the MGA, we're within that, we won't have to hold another election until our AGM. So we're working, we're working toward that. In the back, we're behind, committee, like in the back, this is Roland. I feel random, let's be public around here. We've also got two full-time office employees and three full-time public works employees. Do you guys want to, do you know everybody?
No, I think what we'd like to do, although I know both of you, that's not to say everybody knows everybody.
Yeah, maybe a round of introductions.
We'll start with your former instructor of the technical expertise.
Thank you, order. Congratulations, Jennifer, for being involved in public labor, state-owned or public service. It's good to see someone that I have, obviously, she's younger than I am, so.
Everybody's younger.
Everybody's, exactly. And another member, space Patterson, the councilor for District Five, which is Bolivian, that's in the area.
Jack Jordan, District Seven, that's from Martha Inish. Councilor Neil Silver, Small Brook. What point area?
Barbara Longwood, District Four, from the foot of Smokey to the Bell Museum to the Seal Island Bridge and all, I'm seeing there.
I'm Neil, District One, Wyoming, Washington, there's way to the river.
Nora McDonald, District Eight, starts in South Harbor, goes right up to Patsy, from Northern tip of the island.
Larry Dophie, the Inish, Inish heat, Jared.
Uh, for our platform, uh, please, could I hit a rumor? My answer's...
Thank you. I just want to make sure you know, you know everybody else.
Sure.
I don't.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yes, only a cabin seat.
Oh, so, uh, secretary assistant to Gail.
And we just had a couple of... By the step, we just...
Uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, we're in the, not at all.
Bruce Morrison, Councilor for the day.
So in that meeting, we'll also just identify where the village is. So in the west, the village starts and ends just beyond the Foundry, and goes east to the driveway of the Bell Museum, and north to the Overpass, and then, of course, to the... So the first piece of infrastructure that the village is responsible for is the water treatment and distribution center. So again, just to sort of highlight where that is, east to Crescent Grove, so it actually extends beyond the village boundaries, east to Crescent Grove, west to the Bedakian, which is just past the urban, and north to the transfer station. So beyond the village limits, but it is within our responsibility. We have about 1,200 connections. About 20% of those are commercial connections, the rest are residential. And we draw the water from two drill wells out of Cradis Sound remotely in Vicada, in rural districts. And that water is then piped to a concrete bottom reservoir, close to the treatment plant, which is behind, both the reservoir and the treatment plant are insert behind the RCPHs. And it is a Level One treatment and distribution system. In terms of what we're looking at, or working on for the water treatment and distribution system, we did just complete a water rate study via our coordinator, and it's taking place on Friday. So we are looking at an increase both in consumption charges and in our waste rate. So our current consumption rate is seventy-seven cents per cubic meter, and we're looking at increasing that to a dollar twenty-two per cubic meter, which is still a really great level of water rate. We, our water rate study is for two years. We are anticipating that we'll have to increase those rates again incrementally. So we'll see on December the fourteenth. We would anticipate that those water rates will be accepted as presented.
And maybe we're mentioning that they have not been increased for...
Since ten years. Yeah, over a decade. There hasn't been a water rate study done. So we knew this was coming. And moving forward, they will be done regularly. We have that in the past year as well, so don't feel bad about that. It's just a part of it. But we're looking forward to getting that straight away. The other major issue that we have with the wastewater, or with the water treatment plant and the distribution system, is that we do have a capacity issue. So just to sort of put that in perspective, we do have two wells. Right now, we're only operating upon one well, because there's a valve that we replaced on one of those wells, which is in our upcoming budget. But right now, we're approaching the place where we're at the limit of how much water we can actually pull out of that well in terms of environmental regulations. So we can quite easily mitigate that by opening up the second well, replacing that valve, and then we'll be able to draw water from two wells, which mitigates that issue. However, our pumping capacity in our plants, our plants can't actually pump a significant more volume of water. So could we draw more water from the wells? Yes. But can our plants actually pump and process that water? No. So our system, when we look at the high season, so when all of our tours and operators are operating, our hotels, our restaurants, when all our summer residents are here, our treatment system is working somewhere around twenty-three and a half hours a day on average. So again, even if we have more water to pump, we really don't have the capacity to pump much more. So our pumping capacity is somewhere between fourteen and twenty liters per second, depending on where it is in the cycle, and we're essentially at that, even in our low season. So I asked the guys at the treatment plant to take a couple of measurements. So this is at the end of October and early November. The average time that our plant is functioning is about twenty-one hours and fifteen minutes. That's in the off season. So we know, we are starting to understand that we're going to have to have a look at building capacity in our water treatment plant in order to be able to accommodate more users. So I think that's important for the municipality to know, because it will impact our ability to provide a utility service for folks who are moving in. We are looking at leak detection. So in 2013, there was a recommendation to the village to look at leak detection in the system, because we know that we're actually pumping and processing more water than we are receiving income for that, so we're leaving somewhere, and this is doing nothing happening. The new water meters that were purchased, that I know you all were aware of, because I came through the CCPS fund, we're hoping that that will help us get a better data collection around how much water is actually being consumed, and then how much is probably being lost to leakage. We know that it is normal to leave some water, so it's somewhere in the ten to fifteen percentage range, it's sort of normal for systems. But we're not hoping that we're losing water, but there's a possibility that there may be some leaks somewhere. The village does now have, there was a leak detection equipment that was defunct, and they were missing a battery, and they weren't able to use it, but we did secure a battery, and so now we have that leak detection capability. So our public works guys are looking to identify and then mitigate any leaks that may be in the system. But this is certainly a concern for the village, and I can see it being a concern.
Very special as a battery, no, no.
Right, a triple-A battery. It actually can preserve it, that our, that our leak detection. So we'll be using that going forward. The other piece that we identified that we're a bit of a concern is that, right now, there is no generator compatible system at the water treatment plant. So if power goes out, we can't treat water. It was in the summer, the plant was wired to be able to be generator compatible, so that's really great. And we've had a discussion with the village table about how are we going to then hook into a generator that we need to procure or rent or purchase. But we do feel strongly that in terms of emergency preparedness, we need to have backup for our water system. So that's definitely on our radar. We are looking at trying to find some grants to do that. The other piece, of course, hydrant replacement, that's in our current budget. So we need five. We'll be at five to eight thousand dollars for hydrants, and three are in the budget for this year, both the budget for that upcoming. And again, that's part of regular maintenance and capital investment that will continue to be in the budget moving forward. We also need to purchase new fluoridated residual meters. Again, they just have a lifespan, and they're broken down in their lifespan, so that will be in our budget for next year. This is part of, just sort of so that you have a sort of a mental picture of what our system looks like, that's the reservoir in the top corner, and this is sort of, this is our new system of chlorinating the water. That's where our chemicals are stored. This is, that's a new electrical upgrade, now that our plant is ready for a generator. That's the storage tower, one of our patients, and this is a SCADA. So part of what we also need to do is upgrade some of our technology, both of the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. So that's just a picture. That's a computer screen that the guys use to monitor the systems. And our tech guys have identified that it is not quite up to date. So talk about that on a later slide. We're going to roll that in for wastewater treatment plant. Any questions about water? We'll have lots of space for questions at the end, too. So the next piece of utility that we're responsible for is the wastewater treatment plant. And again, it extends slightly beyond our village limits. So we, east to the museum driveway, west to Alderwood, and north to the Overpass. And the plant is actually behind the school. We have approximately 500 customers, and it's a Level Two wastewater treatment plant. That's just a picture of sort of the process that the water goes through. This is where I said the guys had a look at our technology and realized that it needs to be replaced. When our guys come in and had a look at the control panel, they said basically, like, if this breaks down, we cannot get ours. And if we have a system failure, we could be up to a year without a functioning wastewater treatment plant. So we did, we did request a code from Link to replace that system. We're looking at fifty-five thousand dollars. We have made the commitment. It's a not, it's an arrangement. We have to replace it, because we cannot have that much of a liability at our wastewater treatment plant. So we are applying for a grant that closes at the end of, a fifty percent grant closes at the end of this week, to help support this upgrade. The last time that the wastewater treatment system had any significant fund, which put 2.1 million dollars put in in 2001, and when that investment was made, they said, no, this is a fifteen to twenty-year investment, and we're past that. So again, we do know that there are things at the wastewater treatment plant that are going to need to be operated, because they're at the end of their lifespan. So this is the first piece. We're anticipating that the work will start in March or April to get this control panel up to date. And that's, again, it's being done by Link. Similarly, we don't have generator capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, so we have identified that as a concern as well. We also have realized in the last little while that when the wastewater treatment plant goes down, the monitoring system from, or the water treatment plant is actually located at the wastewater treatment plant. So the guys can't monitor, the wastewater treatment plant is still working, because it's on a different line, but they can't monitor the levels, because the computer system is at the wastewater treatment plant. So even though we know that the water is safe, if you can't check the levels, it's still problematic. So we need to have generator backup at that plant as well. So again, the plant itself needs to be wired, and then we'll be looking at a generator. The wastewater treatment plant generators would be, need to be significantly bigger than the water treatment generator, just because of the mechanics that it needs to control. But again, we might have a hard time as a concern for emergency preparedness. Similar to the water treatment plant, we have, and again, because we're looking at it since 2001, that there's been a major capital investments in the wastewater treatment plant, we do have capacity concerns around this lot of capacity for increased usage. So we are looking at an inflow and infiltration assessment. So we do know that on heavy rain days, so days that we have a rainstorm, we know that a lot of that stormwater, that rainwater is ending up at our water treatment, at our wastewater treatment plant. It's obviously not raw sewage. It's not what the plant is designed to process, but it's coming into our system, and our system needs to process it. And so those are the times that we are having overflow events, and that means that there's a bypass into the lake where there's been partially treated water going into the river, which is probably not right, right? But we also know that it's stormwater, not sewage. So we have to assess where that stormwater is coming from. Part of that is around, you know, making sure that new builds and that foundation drain and road, right? All of that water should not be directed into the sanitary sewer, because that's not where it's supposed to go. So we're going to have to, we're in the process of securing an engineering firm to do an IONI assessment, so that's about a DART test and things like that, to try and identify where it's coming into the system, and if it in fact should be entering our system. And if it shouldn't, then we're going to have to look at mitigation. And where should it be? How do we redirect that water, so it's not coming into our water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant?
And we made, one of our newsletters, some communication to residents about things they could actually do to help take some of the water away from the water, the wastewater treatment plant. And there are some things that each homeowner can do, so.
Like making sure that your storm drain isn't actually flowing into the sewer system, right? And all of those things are in building code, we know that, but we also know that sometimes those things happen, and so we can try and mitigate that. There are also, just in terms of our concern, in 2001, there was a federal policy that actually mandates that development be stopped if bypass events are over here getting raised. So basically, that means if you have, you know, whatever, five bypass events in 2021, and you have six bypass events in 2022, that there should be a mandatory development. In that regulation, there was no need to, they didn't say we have to actually monitor those bypass events. So we don't have distinct data that identifies that, but anecdotally, we know that there is a concern there. So these bypass events that we've been having, so there was a bypass event, the big storm in October. There was a significant bypass event that lasted about twenty-three hours of water being discharged into the river, and it's only going through our UV. So if it is partially treated, it is safe. It's not an environmental disaster, but it's not, it's also not ideal. So our guys are now keeping track of all of those events. Some of them need to be reported to Environment, so if it impacts an equal-by-level learning of those things, those things are recorded and recorded. But not everything needs the threshold for a recordable event. But our guys are recording that to make sure that we're not reading through that bypass. But we know it is, because we have, you know, we're having these bypass events, and we need to account for that. And again, it should be a concern for the municipality, because it's going to impact development. How much more, how many more users can we supply that service to? The next thing on our, our pit list, we have three SPR, we have four SPR tanks. So those are the tanks that sort of mix things up, and then sediment settles to the bottom. We only are operating with three. We haven't only operated with two up to this summer, because two of them were plugged. So one of them was unplugged this summer. They attempted to unplug SPR three, but it's a bigger job than our guys have the capacity to do. So we will be, hopefully in 2024, looking at unplugging that third tank, so that we can have a full, our full swath of tanks working.
Has anybody in the group hasn't actually been to the plant and had a good look at how it works?
I'll show you. I'll show you some of those things. Yeah, so, so the SPR tanks are where some of the, the...
The storage water.
Yeah, so it's a part of the system. And there's four of them, and they're, they mix things, they add air to it, they add bacteria that helps break down any harmful things. So those are what the tanks do. And it's functioning well, agree. Having another tank wouldn't change the bypass event. It's not, the capacity is not in the SPR tank. The last thing?
I know, just, but what I was saying is that they haven't had a tour. They should come and check it out, because it would give you a better understanding of how everything is processed, but just importantly, why it's so difficult to unplug one of the tanks when the SPR is while they're in operation.
I have some pictures. Yeah, the pictures will sort of show you, it's not a unique process. The, the next thing sort of on our, you know, we have to consider list is our de-watering process. So there is solids or sludge left at the end of the process, and right now, the sludge or the solid that's left in our plant is about ninety-eight percent of the water. When the plant was built, there was a centrifuge included in the plant that de-watered things, but that centrifuge broke. We're not exactly sure when. We know it's like at least a decade. So it's been a long time that that centrifuge hasn't been working. So we're, we have to get those solids out of the system, but right now, it's ninety-eight percent solid of water that we're hauling offsite, that we're paying to haul for nine hundred dollars truckload. And we know that we can de-water those solids better. When we looked at the centrifuge, again, our operators and our operator charge, some of the experts have said, like, at the time, that centrifuge was a really great piece of equipment, but it's not too bad on the one anymore. And so there are better options for de-watering. So we've looked at a couple of different options, and trying to make sure that we can produce, produce a sludge, sounds kind of silly, but producing a sludge, an end product that is de-watered, so that we can then manage it better. So that's on our list of things to do. Right now, the management, right, we're trucking the solids off, and we're, it's fine. It's just not very cost-effective, and it's not very environmentally effective.
How often do you truck them?
We just took the last truckload last week, yeah. And so that'll stop over the winter, and then it happens once a week.
Before that, for, for quite a while, they were recirculating that stuff, so it was not brought outside.
Right, so they were just...
So the unit, it was more important to, to take it out and, and drive it away, but they had, we had to guide it to places. So it's quite possible, because ninety-eight percent is water. And now we do it until April-ish, and then we have to wait for weight restrictions on the road, and then we can all start doing it.
And in theory, you can just let that stuff sit, and it just recirculates through the system. But it's not good for your system to have those solids living there, right? They should be removed. So again, it just means that our system isn't functioning at its best, because the solids are not being removed, and they're just being recirculated and reprocessed, and reprocessed, and reprocessed. I do have a couple of pictures of that. So the, I'll just get them all up, and then I'll kind of explain what they are. So for that computer screen, sort of shows how the system works. So it comes in, and it goes through the first, like upward red pieces, it goes down through, the lowers put it in, they add air to it, they add bacteria to it, and then it goes into the SPR tanks, which are the four sort of green boxes there, and it circulates, and then it sits, and it settles, and then the water that is clear sitting at the top, just so that you let somebody settle in your jar, then it becomes bottled off into the next system. The yellow in the top corner are the lowers, so that puts air into the system. So it air everything. And you have a look at these, or these little water bottles. Before it goes into SPR, it sort of looks like the raw sewage and wastewater, the second one, and then it settles in the SPR tanks, and the solid settles to the bottom, and then the water on the top is sited off. And then it goes into the UV light, the UV light's our last treatment process before it heads into the lake. So that's the ring in the top corner up there, the ring system, so it goes to where you need treatment system before it goes out into the lake. And the compressors, you can see the compressors in the center, third picture there. That's what pumps, those are the pumps that pump into the SPR tanks, that are actually located in the ground and outside of the treatment plant. And that's just another picture of the compressor. This shows you some of the control panel, and it's, it's not operating. Even when you look at the computer screen, like, we know that that is not the best way to monitor our system. So we're looking at working them. So we're looking at that program. Any more questions on that? Okay, next piece is the community work. So that is an asset of the village that we are responsible for. We've been working hard at looking at a strategic plan for the work and finding a balance between its commercial uses and its community uses. So Waterfront Bedak is a subcommittee of the village and they are a voluntary group to the village commission and they manage the waterfront. They have recommendations to the commission around managerial operational type decisions. So one of the things that we have a conversation around is that we want the work to have a revenue stream that makes it physically sustainable. Or we don't want to have to be using our tax dollars to subsidize the work. We are hopeful and we are realizing, given our fiscal and our financial statement, that the work can be sustainable. It can sustain itself. It can function as an entity that doesn't require tax dollars to function. We also want to sort of have an improved access and appeal. So it should be a place that appeals to the residents and that appeals to visitors and has a broad appeal to community users. And then it's, that it's accessible to a wide variety of uses as well, right? That it's not just for voters necessarily, that there's an opportunity there for other people to access it. So some of the ways that Waterfront Bedak has improved access, they added the floating docks to the side of the work. So that gives different types of boats better access to the work. Then it gives different sizes of ships to both access to the work. We also, this summer, we've always found that there were actually power terminals on the work. So now boats have the ability to plug in and to power up, which again increases access and it increases our ability to sort of, I don't use the word compete, but to, to be on an equal standard with some of the other community wards and some of the other marinas in the lakes and in the province. We have business operators on the work. So we've got the freight shed and there's got Windstar Sand, uh, Windstar Tours, which is formerly the Amima, and their new craft, and we've also got C D I Sand and Tours. So they are business operators that operate from the work. We also want to see lots of community usage and events. We did have the, the municipality was involved with Bedak West and that part of that event was held on the work. We're having active conversations around how do, what does the community event look like on the work? And how do we, how does it cool happen for those things? And how, what does insurance look like for those things? So we're having those kinds of conversations because we want to make sure that it doesn't become a liability for the village and we want to make sure that community events are welcome and that that's balanced, balanced with any sort of commercial venture that's happening on the work. Support from the Lions Club, so the floating dock that's off of the off of sort of the side door is also stored on top of the, that work. And then the village is responsible for the garbage collection and some of the verification that happens at the work. Upcoming, we're looking at improving lighting, improving accessibility, again, having a look at that. We're looking at a better reservation system. So our docking system, we know we can do better. And we're looking at a feedback process too, because right now we, other mention of order note, we don't have the ability, the formal ability for voters to provide feedback to the village with their experience or for people who maybe canceled their booking or they stayed longer than expected, but we want to know why those things are happening. So we're, we're looking at a better feedback process so that we can get some of that data. Just to give you some numbers, we had this season, which we may have one or two other votes, but I didn't think so. So up to fifty feet, we had a hundred and six boats for a hundred and forty-seven nights. So those are sort of the smaller craft. Fifty-one feet to eighty feet, we had twenty-two independent boats for fifty-one nights. Over eighty feet, those are being the, some of the super yachts that we saw. We had thirteen super yachts for a total of forty-five nights and we have three cruise ships. Another match is safe tonight. They're all docked and decked and headed out. The revenue for the work this year was seventy-five thousand eight hundred and twenty. That was as a pro reverse. I know we did have a little bit more income come, but round numbers about seventy-six thousand dollars and our expenses were just under fifteen thousand. So that is sort of an indication that the work is financially sustainable. There's a fifteen percent capital reserve and operating reserve fund that those revenue, that revenue stream is directed towards because we know that there's going to be long-term investments that's gonna have to happen in the work. So some of that revenue is directed directed to that. And then it also helps us on some of the other things that we want to do on the work, on the waterfront of the village. Any questions on that?
I just wanted. Yeah, um, it's my latest to the power terminals in the work. Um, all this year, I have teenagers, so they're just jumping in the, in the work. And some people say you are loud, you're loud and the power is, is in the water. So is any signage coming in? Because we can tell the kids don't walk, but we can't.
Yeah.
Everyone is doing it right now. So it's something that are, it's very safety. And so, uh, I, I understand you probably surround, but when you go off, it's when it's a issue. Because it's a lottery for them and we can just keep them in the table or whatever.
Yeah.
So I just wondered if you guys putting some signage on or.
That's actually, yeah, that's a really good question. That's one of the things that Waterfront Bedak is identifying. Where should, where should the signage be?
Yeah.
Why should they be there so that we can communicate that, right? It's not just that we're being cranky and we don't want you jumping off the water. Here's why. How do we communicate that to the community? And we know, I mean, I've come here and jumping off the work is a bit of a right of passage. And so how do we provide those opportunities for kids in a way that's safe? So it is on Waterfront Bedak's agenda. Signage is also on there. Even signage for jumping, signage for smoking, we know that we need to do a better job.
They stand now in the work?
There's, most of them are excited.
Oh, there are, there are. Maybe they need to look different or they need to be in a different location or we need to do a better job of communicating that to the people who lives here.
Yeah.
We realize that there were lots of kids jumping off the work when there were, there were lots of those signs on the work.
Exactly. Okay, we just.
Yes. And how do we enforce that, right? Like how do we? That's a, a, a big part of the conversation that we're having at the village is that we have some of these concerns, but we don't necessarily have the ability to enforce those things. And so how do we make sure that bylaws that we create or rules that we create are enforceable? Because without enforcement, and it is a spectrum, right? We don't want to be, we want to make sure that the education for reinforcement happens first so that then we can hopefully.
No, it's very, um, important for the parents. Like, if you just send more tools, could somebody done to it?
Exactly.
Signs there.
Exactly. So there's what you're, exactly what you're talking about. Those are some of the power terminals. That's what they look like. They kind of look like little lighthouses and people can be redecorated, but they're not actually the power term, terminals.
And, and assistance for water backups for the boats as well, both what you're charged for.
Right. Oh, yeah. It's not a free, it's the percentage. Yeah.
And just before you leave that, Senator, I think, Councilor Patterson.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this was before you were running. I, I had a couple of conversations with the voters who pulled up to the board and were told that you can't, you can't stop here. To me, they didn't feel very welcome.
Exactly, which is why.
And secondly, if, if they plan to go to supper in Bedak or whatever, they may come up on the boat or whatever. So what, what is your policy or what is your, your recommendation then?
Yeah, that's a really good question. That's part of why we need to make sure we have a better reservation system and we have a better feedback system. Because if that information isn't coming back to management and the commission, then we don't necessarily know about that. And if we don't know about it, we can't mitigate it. And so Waterfront Bedak, we've, we've been having these conversations around, we want to ensure that the community votes, the other votes that are on the lake, that they feel welcome. And so while, you know, some of the cruise ships are a big revenue driver for us, we want to make sure that there's a balance there, that small voters are able to come in and feel welcome and come in and spend their dollars in the village, right? We want to ensure that. So we hope that that feedback piece will help with that. And we also hope that a reservation system that's more real-time based will also let us and our dock, and our work manager will have the system and say, okay, yeah, they might be coming in, but we're not really. Right? There had, there weren't any Johnny nights where we had, there were, I think, three nights this summer. Where we were, we were half the work was full. And so we weren't able to accommodate anybody else. But those nights are even harder. And so most days and most nights, we are able and should be able to accommodate everybody who wants to.
And it's like, like you said, they didn't feel welcome, that they're for me. And secondly, they took the time to, to contact me. So I mean, that maybe says they didn't just say, oh, that's the way it is. They want to see a change, I think. And I guess, you know, you were working on that. But it, it would benefit everybody, I mean, you're, you're welcome, you're, you're welcome there. Not that you're gonna be turned away. That's the worst.
It's our campaign and I work directly with Waterfront Bedak. And we are trying to, also even at capacity or close to capacity, we want to build alternatives. So we can tell people, we also have access to these locations to block, even though we're full. And there are more involved, we don't have a great digging system, which is another thing that we like to add about the land. Because that helps. A lot of people are just there for a short term. If they can get in and out from their craft, it's, it's pretty easy, but if they can't, it's pretty tough.
So I'm, I'm just, we're just, I know you're gonna have time for questions, so I am just gonna move questions and tell.
So there's just a picture of a super yacht. That's one of the events of Great Lake. This is one of the visiting ships. So we're also, Waterfront Bedak is looking at a visiting ship program. So not every ship necessarily or not every craft is there for a commercial purpose. So this ship came in and they offered tours to people in the community and they offered that free. And so we want to be able to encourage those boats to come so that people get to have those experiences. So we're looking at how can we encourage those things to happen and we're hopeful that a policy will come through before the new season. That's just a picture of the work we use. You can see the floating docks on the side that are there. Public consultation, so we really want to make sure that the work isn't the community need. So this is just some feedback that we've had from some meetings around the work. And that was the event that we had. Next bit, which ties into the work is Waterfront Bedak. Obviously, the municipality was very involved in this project as well. It is not an exclusive village project by any way, shape or form, but we wanted to include it here. So the bus drop off area, again, we've got a really positive feedback around that this season. The parking spaces, we do know in, in the spring, we're gonna do a little bit of a different job painting some of those lines. There were some issues with parking there this summer. Again, enforcement in that spectrum, but we're gonna shift, we're gonna make them look a little bit more obvious, no parking. So that'll happen this spring. And again, the notification piece, I think it looks right down there. The washroom, so the village now has washrooms located in the side of the gym, in that community, the basement of the community hall. Again, more accessible for people coming off the work. We have an M O U with the daycare, the cleaning, so that is an interesting piece too for the work. I know that we're running out of time, so I'm gonna blow through, but you can ask all the partners in the work, yeah. Kids' Island is the other piece of Waterfront Bedak that we're focused on. So again, there's walking trails, we had a summer student there this year that cleaned up social. So she offered some guided walks. We're working on signage over there, both, you know, safety-based signage and also interest-based signage, so folks know what they're looking at. Again, all this is part of the Lions Club's program. Again, municipality obviously has support of that program as well. The permanent work was constructed over there. Waterfront Bedak is actively monitoring environmental changes on Kids' Island. That's in partnership with some of the universities in partnership. That's the folks who are sitting here. The lighthouse, poor, second lighthouse, I'll never get attention. So the lighthouse on the easternmost end, the traditional lighthouse, celebrating a hundred and fiftieth anniversary in two thousand and twenty-five. So the village is kind of has that in our craw as something we'd like to celebrate and recognize. Similar to the municipality, of course. The wooden structure, we did do an engineering, a very basic engineering report on the lighthouse. The wooden structure is in great shape. It does need to combine repairs, the ceiling around the windows. Nothing significant, but the foundational work is very significant. So I'll show you some pictures. This is not an immediate need, but it's like in the next three to five years, we know there's going to need to be foundational repair happening at the lighthouse. We just approved, we approved a motion at the last meeting to go forward with some more preliminary engineering work to talk about how do we mitigate that problem, right? Do we lift it and move it? Do we, how do we, how do we do that? So we're looking forward to hearing about that. That's a picture of the construction of the work. Then Kids' Island, some of the signage is happening. We want to make sure that it's accessible again to small boats, small craft, folks coming over. You know, some of that environmental impact, we have some birdhouses and bat houses with our summer students. Picture of some of the states for monitoring the seal worries. That's a picture, a couple of pictures of the lighthouse that was painted. Here you can see some of the cracks in the foundation. You can actually see like sunlight coming through there, so it's not a good thing. These are from our engineering report. And again, we're looking at mitigating that.
Was that the east lighthouse or the one you see on the bay?
The big one, the big one.
Was it on?
The other one on the other end.
Can't see it from that real estate.
It's not nearly as like photographing.
Go around the other end.
That's, that's a photograph. The next piece is the boardwalk. So obviously we have a replacement goal of the boardwalk. We all know that, it needs to be replaced. We see it as very exciting, so we're looking, I'm gonna flip through all of them and I'll hammer. So we know that whatever gets put there needs to be able to withstand the water and the storms and the wind. We want to make sure that we're looking at erosion, we want to make sure we're keeping in mind climate change. We did, uh, in partnership with the Bedak Improvement Association, they were granted a two-hundred-and-one, two-thousand-dollar grant that was just announced two weeks ago. Through the Sustainable Community Challenge Fund for Living Shoreline. So the end of the boardwalk that's like towards the inver, they're looking at integrating not just the wooden structure, but also like natural rock, natural sand. And if you look at some of the pictures from the nineteen-fifties, aerial photographs of the waterfront, it looked like there was a bit of a shoulder. So we're looking at working with a contractor that we are, we just went out actually, so we're looking at a procurement firm to work with us to develop that living shoreline. There's been some really interesting projects elsewhere in the province where they've incorporated this living shoreline for lots of reasons. It helps to mitigate some of that erosion, right? And it helps to make it more storm-worthy and it also is important requirement today. So we're working on that. We had an info session on December the sixth, a community meeting, asking folks what we want to see down at the boardwalk and finding that balance and ensuring that it is a community driven project. Our goal, the commission's goal, I'm gonna say it, is to have that project finished for July first in two thousand and twenty-five. That's the goal.
And you're tied in with accessibility, right, municipal?
Right.
Just value level and village and everybody else where you can access it.
Right. And so, one more. So again, like you said, we want to make sure it's accessible to folks, that it's locals and it's tourists and it is, yes, an economic driver, but it's also lives or community events can happen.
And it's safe.
And it's safe, right? So that's just again, some of the feedback that we've got, some, these are early renderings. This is not what the boardwalk's necessarily gonna look like. These were renderings that were done two years ago, but it just gives a bit of an idea that we're hoping to push the boardwalk out into the lake, out of the beach. And again, that just gives us more space to, because we know we can't come into a water treatment yard anywhere else. And we're looking at permitting and all of those things. All of those balls are rolling. And again, looking at, like you said, for like how do kids access the water? Can we do that in a different place? Does it look differently? And so we're looking at incorporating all of those things into the boardwalk. This is probably the slide that you're most interested in. Now we're up here. We have fulfilled the ministerial order that the village was under, has been fulfilled. We are no longer under that order, as they mentioned. We are still very much in the ministry's review. He's very aware of what we're doing and we welcome that involvement, but we are no longer under the ministry's authority, which is great. Our current financial projection, how it's operating with a small surplus of all these lighthouses here. So again, that's projected, but we're working really hard at our our budgeting process and making sure that we're physically responsible for what we're doing. In terms of communication, we really want it to be more transparent and make sure that the residents and that the root payers and the taxpayers knew what we were doing. So in September, we circulated a newsletter. We're anticipating sending another one out in January. We do have a website, W W W dot M F O L S dot C. Yay, that's now up. It's again, in the early stages, but we will have our meeting minutes, our agendas, all of that stuff, our moderates that will be there, all of those things so that it's accessible for folks. We just passed the terms of reference for committees. So Waterfront Bedak was a very high functioning committee, but there were no terms of reference for that committee. And so now there is. And it's, you know, we'll be rolling through, how do people get onto the Waterfront Committee? Well, there wasn't a policy before, but now there is. So they will be appointed by, there will be a call for expression of interest. Those folks can bring forward their name to the commission. The commission will then appoint folks to the Waterfront Bedak Committee in a much more transparent way. And there are other things within that, but that's just an example. We also have other committees coming out of that who will also be expected to adhere to those terms under the M G A. We have a smoke-free policy. Thank you very much. We rely, rely heavily on yours. The village, we have one. And again, we know the boardwalk, the waterfront, we need a better smoke-free policy. Right now it's a policy, not a bylaw, because we're an enforcement piece, but we're working on it. We're hoping we can get to bylaw stage. We're developing a grant policy right now, so right now the village doesn't have a policy for giving grants. They just serve for, you know, someone will come and they can say yes or no. But we feel like it's a very important piece to have a policy and a procedure around. So we'll be having a discussion of, we have a draft policy right now. We'll be discussing that on Wednesday. And again, hopefully for the net, for the upcoming year, we'll have a clear policy around how our grants are distributed, when they are distributed and who they are distributed to. Again, in the interest of fiscal responsibility and transparency and all that kind of stuff. Developing an accessibility plan, they already mentioned that. So it's sort of, and again, you guys already had one. We probably shouldn't have one, but we didn't. We'll probably rely heavily on what you guys are doing because they're. We'll probably rely heavily on what you guys are doing because we're still on a crossover, right? Um, we're revisiting and updating our source water protection plan. We have a new committee structured with that, that should have been updated, but wasn't. We'll be moving forward. Victoria Island Civic Center property is on our agenda. So the village held a lease for Victoria Island Civic, the Rink, um, property. It was a big year lease and it expired in August. So maybe we mentioned when we were sworn in, this is one of the things that was on our, our agenda was to, the province had offered the village another 15 year lease to sign with them or that property. Uh, we've been in discussions with, and I'm going to say the Rink, it is the Victoria Island Civic. We've been in discussions with the Rink around what the village brings to that, right? Essentially, we've been a, we've been a very silent partner. The village has been a very silent partner in that lease agreement for the last 50 years. But in terms of the current commission, before we sign that lease, we need to make sure that we're protecting liabilities for residents and taxpayers that may come up as a result of that lease and that we're ensuring that there's responsible development happening. I mean, we'd certainly welcome municipal support, input, shared responsibility on that project. Because we do know that the Rink services certainly much more than just the village and the wharf, right? No, it's certainly not debt based. It might be here, but the users are not over that, so that's on our agenda. The old Academy property, the tennis courts property, the old Academy property between Morrison's Ranch and Russell's Linnwood is now owned by the village. Um, so that was acquired in June of 2022. For sure, June of 2022. Um, it's on our radar in terms of, we know that we want to look at that property. It's a great piece of property in the village and we want to make sure that's sustainable development happening on that property as well. Um, we're looking forward to the EDPC committee that will be a shared venture with the municipality. We're looking forward to that. We have a, we have a real opportunity to collaborate with the municipality on that. Again, our bylaws, we're going to open them in the new year. We do, and again, we rely heavily, every time we have a bylaw, it's special number, the people, what the county is doing. So we go have a, your bylaws, because some of ours are very dated and we know that we need to update some and that we need some in place that we don't actually have. Um, and of course, tax collection is on the end of the list, but it's, you know, one of our major revenue streams. That has been a struggle for the village. Again, we all know how that all went down. It was a very difficult process. The village is still struggling with how to manage getting those taxes out and rolling that through. And again, we welcome the conversation around how efficiently the municipality does that and the inefficiencies that the village is experiencing in terms of how we can pass and what we want. And I think that's it. I think that's the end. Yes, just to thank you. That was a lot of talking.
That's a lot of information. It's excellent.
It's a lot of information and I, I think, what, what I really wanted to convey with the commission, we wanted to convey is that we know that the village has not been there its weight in terms of what we've been expecting from municipality and some of the draw that would have been. But we are fortunate and are very engaged with commissioners. We've got a very engaged staff. We've got residents who spoke clearly at a public meeting and said, we want the doors to exist. And so moving forward, we're really trying to look like, not just here, we're really trying to look down the road and make sure that all of our infrastructure is sustainable and all of our governance is transparent and that we are a collaborative partner that you guys, the municipality especially, can count on to hold up our end of the card. So that's sort of where we sit and certainly I hope you welcome feedback, suggestions, questions, comments, things that we should know that don't. We welcome everything all of that.
We, it's okay, we were just talking out first and just some free questions for comments and, uh, just perhaps anybody on this side that wants to open, just.
Just, uh, the presentation, uh, there's a lot of projects, um, really interesting to happen. Of course, the, you know, the green space and fireworks, everything it can help through, you know, it's, 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 it's interesting.
It's exciting. And we, and it's nice to see it after I got to see what's happening and, uh, you know, and the children that live for a long time and the doors have been ready for the three weeks.
Thank you, councillor. Any, any other councillors?
Yeah, no, I just want to say thanks very much. I have a little more confidence. Uh, I, I like your process, where you're going with it, uh, you're looking at the future and I think that holds well. Uh, very impressed with what you're doing. I, I just wondered, like, you've talked about a lot of projects here and a lot of things that have, you have great, and it's your stuff giving water stuff all behind the eight pole. Do you have a dollar figure, everything that's going to be done, what is the dollar figure to crack everything up and stuff?
We don't have it right now, so we are, this is what I think the engineering firm hopefully is going to have a look at. But like, we know, anecdotally, we know that when there's a leak and the guys at Public Works dig to fix that leak, it turns into a much bigger problem than anticipated. Like all of the infrastructure is old, right? Um, and so we need to prepare an engineering firm to give us that information. Are we looking at fixing things or are we looking at putting new things in? So hopefully we can answer that question like this time next year.
Fair ball.
That's all, that's also why I'd rather it stays on for two years.
Yes.
Because we need a capital program.
Exactly, because there hasn't been a capital program. And so we can't really answer that question.
No, I answered all.
But hopefully, yeah, we will.
Definitely. No, good work. Thank you.
And it also changed substantially if growth is coming at the rate that's being rejected at the, at provincial level. Because that would be a, a big deal versus sort of keeping things going in the month, so it's.
And the water is still. I think the water would study only have for an increase in users, so. And again, they had to make a, they had to make a prediction based on the data that they have and the data that they have is great.
Kind of come on to councillor McNeil. Councillor McCall, do you have a?
No, I just had one question.
Oh, sorry.
Just want to say thanks. Great, great presentation and I think councillor Patterson did very well. Credit there. I'm just curious, I mean, is it the, your rate study was a $1.22? What was your previous, is that what you were at, 70 cents and then 10 years since it was? 10 years?
Just, just over 10, actually.
I just, maybe I missed the, how many users was on that?
We have on the water over 1,200 users, 20%.
I just wanted to talk about the waterfront piece with the, who regulates the usage fees when the boats come?
Waterfront back, so the village, because it's a sub community.
Is that something that's, that's regulated on?
It's not regulated, but when we looked at the rates, we look at, you know, other marinas, we look at other community wharves to make sure that we're on par. Um, we're actually a little bit lower than the average, like lower than, especially when you look at sort of like the northern eastern coast of where some of those boats were coming from, like Maine, Massachusetts. We're much lower than those doggies, but we're pretty much in line with other wharves and wharves.
And it's actually, it was pretty, sorry, go ahead. It's actually more sort of, it's in theaters than the, yeah. Yeah, we're pretty competitive with same sort of facilities available when you got, I mean, it was quite random in prices, but it was also quite random when you get them depending on where you are, so.
And we now have those services, right? The power and water, just huge. Because they're also paying for that service.
And just last, I was wondering with the, when you look into your bylaw process, would the village be interested in, in the LIC at some point down the road?
Oh my goodness.
I just have to, have to ask.
We will be looking at best practices from everywhere in terms of, yeah. But again, our scope in terms of what we're responsible for, I don't know, LIC would necessarily be appropriate given, right? Because the water comes from the water consumption of each rate. The sewer comes from our sewer rate and then our tax rate is the only other revenue stream. So in terms of our infrastructure, I don't know, the station.
The roads are.
Roads are, yeah.
There is a reason why I asked you. Thanks for that.
But if you look at it, they kind of do have an LIC because people in the area get other services and they have to drain them on top of that, so they kind of do have a LIC.
And that's the piece, people who live in the village.
That's why.
Pay more taxes than people that don't live in the village.
Right.
And like, just to be very clear on that, we have a tax rate on top of the municipality rate. And so.
Because you have other services.
Because we have other services, right? It becomes a little bit murky because some of those other services like water, for example, go beyond the village limits. And so it is possible that someone could be on, it is, it is, it is fact that people are on village water and not paying village taxes. But people who live in the village limits pay tax at a rate that is higher than ever at the village.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNeil, and Jennifer, I have those comments.
Thank, thank you. Great presentation, Jennifer, and it's great to have the village in with councillor again.
Yeah, I think we want to be here more often.
Exactly, and, and maybe councillor will go to a village to, 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 because it's, in the, in the past, not, not always in the past, but the, in, in, the recent past, uh, it's got to be safe. Like, tho- those open house meetings, uh, that, that we went to, it was almost as if the municipality was the enemy, right? Those meetings, and we were there to basically listen and to help build the village at that time, but it did come across. And afterwards too, and a lot of emails that came across that, uh, the municipality was the enemy, that we weren't supporting. And we did support a lot of the projects in the past, with the water, the new well and everything. So, uh, and it was the residents, it wasn't basically the, the commissioners, although some did, but the residents were, came up and were against the municipality on a lot. And, uh, that, there was a kind of a, like, bad taste in municipality, like, for a while because we knew what we provided the village. And it wasn't, uh, it wasn't, and I, like, I hate to bring it up, but.
No.
But it's great to have you guys back here and, and we have to work together.
Yes.
We acknowledge exactly what you're saying, yep. And at the same time, we really are focused on doing everything, but protocol driven, team based, completely open, completely transparent.
And, and that's good.
I can, I mean, from the time I joined the commission to today, the evolution has been like this. It's just unbelievable, the change we've been making.
And it has been, and, and, and I see that a brighter future too, for the, to.
Yeah, and I think too, there's, you know, the lines are so blurry about whose responsibility is what and who does what and what forces on me and like ability to do a better job of communicating that and ability to do a better job of communicating with the municipality of what we are doing, right? Or what we do need support on, or what we can handle on our own, right? Things that we can manage. And, and so I think we would welcome any of the councillors at our meetings or the second Wednesday of every month, that's experienced in the village office, and you are always welcome to come and have input. We would certainly, certainly welcome that.
And one other question. Uh, with the wharf, do you have an idea of the visit, the number of visitors coming off the?
We don't track that right now.
Well, you, and get back to that, I can't give the number off the top, but I can tell you that we're right behind women who are in terms of visiting boats.
Um, boaters, but yeah, like people who are boaters, is that what?
Well, boaters and, and even with the bigger cruise ships and everything.
Totally, passenger counts, yes, we do have that. We do have passenger count. We don't keep track of like the people who walk onto the wharf, we don't have any of that data. But in terms of passenger counts, yes, we do have that and we can get back to that.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Councillor Long, what's?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for the great presentation. It's like made you just look so clear about everything that you said, like, just like painted a really clear picture about everything. And congratulations to Fraser, he did a fine job with that student. Um, I did have a question because as soon as you started talking about like people not swimming on the wharf and electricity, like, is it, is it dangerous? Like, if someone jumped in the water, would they be electrocuted or?
It shouldn't be dangerous. I mean, at every step of the day, it's made it safe, but you do have electric, you know, electrical connections there. So in the event that something was dangling from a boater, from a connector and somebody, you know, it is possible that somebody could be hurt. So we don't want people swimming there and we've even, I'll tell you, we've talked about, should we have an isolated spot where people can get out of the water so that they don't go through that lining up? You know, where you have huge electrical power going across the, the wharf. But then for just the behavior that we don't want to see, so it's kind of like, you can't come in here.
And the other piece too, is the boats coming in and out of the wharf, right? And their ability to see swimmers and, and for swimmers to get out of the way and for swimmers to be mindful that there are big boats that can't turn on a dime. So it's not just to go with the power safety, it's to go with the traffic that's happening on the wharf.
Yeah, so I mean, would the sign say you could be electrocuted? I mean, that might keep them out of the water.
And like, certainly that is not a, like, when we look at high risk, like, is that likely? No, but is it a possibility? Yes. So we need to make sure that, yeah, there's no, unless there's an event that occurs where there's an issue with the power, it's not like an imminent risk.
And then the other, my other question was, like, how do you go about putting us, uh, a boardwalk eight feet out into the Redora Lakes without doing anything wrong to the Redora Lakes?
Oh, yeah, so we're in conversation with the carbon environment and natural resources and environmental transportation and fisheries and ocean, and like all of those balls are rolling. And again, um, part of this, the living shoreline consultation will help with that. And how do we develop in a way that's environmentally responsible? We want to ensure that there's native plant there and that the rock formation is similar to what has been there in the past, right? Because when the boardwalk initially was put there, that had an environmental impact. So can we get back to a place that might look a little bit more like a natural landscape? So we have them looking at some of those aerial photos.
So I guess there's some kind of architecture or what do we call it? Engineering way to put something out without having to dump anything into the Redora Lakes or?
Absolutely, yeah. It will all be environmentally sound and responsible and we won't get any permits unless we go through that process.
And it just, the boardwalk does project it over the water, or it, it doesn't look like it, but it is actually over the water. It's not over the shore, which a lot of the people that are sessions believe there was just on brand.
Yeah, well, the one that's there, I don't know, like, it, it seems when there's, like, we have major weather events, it's like underwater and moves and.
So we're going to try and mitigate all of those things.
And that was all my questions, like, again, great job.
You're good, yeah?
Uh, yeah, they just all answered all the questions, but great vision, great vision. I commend you on, you know, taking care of the problems and looking forward to the future.
Fraser, finally, where do you?
Thank you very much. Thank you, uh, anyone who's involved in the, uh, this, councillor McNeil said, you know, there has times when, uh, there's, I wouldn't say fiction, but, uh, maybe more disinterest, like, yes, of our part, uh, you know, okay, if you're outside, as you pointed out, if you're outside of the village, uh, you may not understand the situation as well as you today. Um, you know, there is some resentment, that's God, or whatever, of, uh, you know, what people did that had, but I always point out that what the councillor said, yes, that they paid for. It's not as if they're getting it for nothing, with the rest of the nation. So anyway, again, thank you very much. I'm, Jennifer, very impressed with your knowledge of all those problems. Yeah, without the problems, but the, the systems, I guess, and what needs to be done with them, I'm definitely very, very impressed. And, uh, it's a place to come in and, uh, as the community did, we should probably read more of it.
Yeah, so.
So I just want to wrap up with just four quick points. First, I just want to congratulate you again with every, each individual commissioner stepping up and taking a leadership role within the village, particularly during a difficult time. So good on you.
And we are volunteers who run it too. There was some of that conversation floating around as well, but the commissioners are all volunteers. They're not paid.
Absolutely, and I, and I can assure you that as far as their council goals, that, you know, it's our wish for the village to prosper, village prospers, the municipality prospers, so.
All of Victoria County.
Yeah, we really, uh, so will support you. And honestly, I look at it this way, you've offered a new and fresh perspective today. And I think for those, uh, that live a little further away from the village back, I think it, uh, they'll be reading today with a different perspective and the type of work that you're doing, the responsibilities you have, the challenges you're facing. And as councillor Ogden said, the great vision that you have for the future of this community. So we applaud you for doing that. And the last thing I would say is that, uh, certainly want to give you assurances that we're more willing to work with you. Um, I'm not going back in the past. Some of the fences have to be amended. You and I have had that conversation, but I think this is a really good start to that process. And again, I just want to make sure that if you have any questions, concerns, please contact the CAO or local councillors, whoever it may be. And I can assure you that we look to work you quietly, you know, as we move forward. Good work.
And probably one more thing that I didn't add because it's very real time, it should probably be on the slide. Um, the court case of guilty verdict was entered today. Uh, the sentencing was put to April 2024. Um, and because that literally just happened this morning, it wasn't on my slide, which is that may be of interest.
And honestly, we look forward, working at, we're, what, what's happened has happened. We're, we're, we have moved on and, uh, I think. And, uh, I think if we do that, it's a fresh page and clean slate. So I think it's, you did a great job today of renewing confidence in the village and sharing the vision that you had for it. So welcome.
And Larry, I'll stop to say for at least nothing to you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Ron.
The terrible consequences.
So we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda. It has to do with, uh, a number of unsized premises that were reported in this valley. We have Sean Donovan here from Eastern just planning to give you an update on this. Properties, we'll do them individually, Sean. Yeah, I prefer to, we have some people there that have some questions and concerns about the, this specific property, some questions, so. So as you, uh, you can go through them, uh, in the, in the way that you have them. And there are questions and concerns from either council or the general public, uh, we'll stop it there and deal with it at that specific property. Okay?
And first one is the property one eighty three, Planning Street, for debt. Uh, we received complaints in early two thousand twenty three. As inspected, there's four old barns on the property, lead to a racetrack property. Um, all of them are open and accessible. They're all recommended for demolition. The property was posted, uh, with the date and time for this meeting on November twenty ninth, and that notice was also sent registered mail to the address on property on mine for property. So you see there's four dilapidated barns that are on the property. They're all structural integrity of all been in question. They're all open and accessible. See the condition, district standing on the outside of them. This is the last one that's tucked away a little bit further back in the woods. Um, the roof on most are in, in very bad shape. The walls, you can see on this one, are structural sided and blown out on the sides. Again, you can see the condition on the inside. So the four barns are in dilapidated condition with structural integrity that's been affected. Buildings are open and accessible to the elements. Uh, seriously, now the wood rod can be found on most of the buildings and the buildings are also missing exterior cladding and places are no longer repelling any other elements. They meet municipal government act, is there a erroneous dilapidated condition? They're in such state of non repair, they're no longer suitable for habitation. The property is in slightly relationship to neighboring properties due to the exterior finish of the buildings not being maintained. So our recommendation is that they're severely dilapidated, dilapidated. It meets the M G A as dangerous not slightly. Therefore, our recommendation that the order be to remedy the condition and that order be a demolition order issued from a council to the owners. The order should state for the owners that the four buildings to be demolished and agreed to be removed and disposed of in the appropriate manner within thirty days. And if the property on fail, the land is probably will complete the same recovery cost.
Thank you very much for the report. And I think we have a couple of people here from the project that wish to speak to this particular property.
Yeah.
So just identify yourself.
I'm Amy Ross. I'm one of the, well, I'm the owner of that property. I didn't know anything about this going on until this past Thursday. I happened to be driving by and I noticed the sign on one of the barns, which one? I drove in and it was a sign where it was given to Mr. James Campbell. Why was I not notified by registered mail or even a plain? Cut home call.
So the municipal government act only requires us to post the building. We send registered mail to the daily addresses on property on mine. If there's multiple owners on it and there's multiple mailing addresses, we can mail them to those mailing addresses, but there's only one P O box to that property.
Well, that's not official problem, giving you tax bill to that property and it's mailed to me every year.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't get the taxes, all I can.
It's not, it's not owned by Mr. James Campbell. It's owned by five people. And by rights, I think the letter should be sent to all owner.
Right.
So they all get tax bills for the property. Did Mr. Campbell respond to your call? And he didn't respond to any of the other owners, which is not great as far as I'm concerned. And as far as you're saying, it should be done immediately. I, I'm willing to demolish my barn, that's no problem. But I didn't know about this until, uh, Thursday, this past Thursday. I notified a contractor right away. They have no equipment in the village right now to do it. With Christmas and New Year's coming up, they said it would be at least a month. But they guaranteed me they'd have that my barn. I own one of them. I'm not touching the others. Because I don't think anybody has the right to go onto a property without knowing the owner and demolish any property. But I do have a contractor that's willing to demolish the barn I own. But it would be within a month of the sixth, when I was talking to them. So that would be January the sixth. And I want that kind of accepted here. Because I really think the, the village made a mistake by not notifying me.
There's other owners that are unaware as well.
Yeah, there's four other.
Which should have had the right to come to this meeting and speak maybe as well, but if you're in this order, it's, it's not a way for your job, but. We agree with all of you down the court.
But there are, you said there's four barns?
Four.
There's four different owners. Mr. Campbell does own one of them, but not the four.
They don't speak, there's not a relationship between the group there.
But there should be a relationship between who I would send those letters out. I get my tax bill every year. I pay my taxes on that property and I really think that I understood a letter last September saying you were investigating.
So a couple things. Um, number one, my recommendation is for a thirty day order. So that thirty days wouldn't start at council's size, the issue order, by the time that order is prepared and posted on property in thirty days. Or that you would have thirty days as an order to complete work. On the day, on the expiration of that order is when we would start the work to tender the process. So it's not immediate. There was no mention of immediate demolition for that. If it was immediate danger, you would have tore it down the day you're on site. Um, the other side is that depending on how you have that work, though, ownership of the barns, we can only deal with properties, so all four of those barns are on the property.
And it's owned by five different people.
We, we can't.
The property is owned by five different people.
We have three owners that show on property on mine. And then there is mailing address for three owners. You said lots of properties are migrating, but seems to be the only information that's access. I'm not, as property owners, it's not my responsibility to change addresses or make sure that any legal documents.
My address has been on that property since the last probably twenty five years and the address has not changed.
There's only two, there's five owners that are migrating, is what we're gonna say. Yeah, but there's only one P O box associated with that property.
And why is my P O box registered in the county?
Yourself and property on mine.
Because it is, it should be. They certainly have, the, the folks have a box to send me a tax bill every year.
Yeah, so it's only, there's only one address on property on mine for that property.
Well, you better change it.
That's, that's my responsibility.
Who's responsibility is it?
That's yours, this property owner.
Well, I had a lawyer set it all up and he said it was all set up. With my name on my share of the property as well, as well as my daughter's name. They're both there.
I, I understand that, but from my point of view, I can only see what's on the bridge database for mapping and it's one property. If there's one property, one P O box, that's the only correspondence I have.
Well, I'm gonna check with my lawyer because he said that it should be there. It was all done up and it should be there and it should never have taken place there. But I, don't expect an apology the way you're talking, so what?
But at the end.
No, I have thirty days to demolish that barn.
Well, that's, my recommendation is that the order be a thirty day.
So, uh, just from today?
No, from the day, if council decides to issue a thirty day order.
And it's up to them.
That's up to council, but then it takes time to prepare that order and hold it, so.
It's unlikely to be.
It would not be.
Why do you think the other owners should be notified?
There should be owners that don't know, maybe would have been here during the year, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, like I said, the municipal government act only requires me to post the building. And I posted, if buildings are being maintained and occupied, you'll see the posting and have that. We just send the registered mail as a secondary courtesy for it. And that's still one P O box that is on the property provincial database for that. It's a little different database where nobody lives there, so it's very wrong. It was P O box, right there.
So you have thirty days from the time we signed it and you knock the building down and it's, it's a.
And it's just gonna be the one building that they own. I would think common courtesy would tell you to notify the other owners that own those brands. Because they have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, it's posted, so that's, that's the order.
It's posted on.
Posted, you know, means nobody suits you, right? Like, when you're up there and you literally have to drive up. I've been there twice in fifteen years. We just happened to the last Thursday. Yep.
That's when I ordered with some.
All right, so we can deal with your, we understand your decision and if you decide to take it down in thirty days, that's a moot point. The other issue of the notification of ownership, Sean, you feel you've already done that due process still.
Correct.
So, uh, your recommendation, you wanna go to the, it's for all four, so your recommendation is that, uh, if, uh, the buildings are not taken down within the thirty, after, within the thirty days of the order from the municipality, that the municipality will, uh, take those buildings down. The toss would be transferred over to the.
Correct.
All right, so we've dealt with one of the, one of the burns, so we might proceed with the other, uh, remaining.
Well, the order would still be for all four.
For all four. And again, and if you take your building down and the order is to comply with.
Just a question, so there may be five owners, but there's only one deed, right?
Only one property.
So even if you say you own one barn, legally you own a four barns. You know, you take first one of the one of the barns because it's all on the same property.
The deeds don't separate the barns.
Exactly.
The street of the owners of the barns. So if any pays that her section can't come down, then buildings into the other tree, is that when we pass along to her?
That, that's, I just wanna make sure that's clear, if you understand that, that, that this.
She take it her.
Yeah.
How are you gonna send me a letter telling me how much I owe? You don't have my workshop.
I just tried to, your wrong information, I just wanna let you know that, like, even though you were on that.
I don't think you'd be there.
Not us being fair, just.
When I'm shooting it, I don't think you'd be there because those four other owners should have got a letter besides Mr. Campbell.
They should have the option to be.
Of course they should be.
Is it, is the property in your name?
It's in four different.
Uh, it's in four different people's names and all those four, okay, and all four people get a tax bill.
Five people get to that.
Five people get a tax bill. So I mean, it'll be easy enough to find out who those people are.
I would think when they could send a tax bill, I would think they'd have their addresses to the.
So are there five different tax bills to that property?
Oh, it should be.
Yeah, no, I'm just asking for clarification, so.
That's not the way a tax bill goes. A tax bill goes to
The property.
The property owner and if there's other owners on there, the same number gets sent to all of them. However, there's one tax bill for the property.
Yes, and it's divided up between pop every year.
So this bills will go the same way once, uh.
Even if I carry mine down?
So that, yes.
Well, I would say that at least let the other owner know.
So legally, we've done our piece, so possibly you and your.
Councillor to, uh, proceed with the order. So you go to Claire to make the motion to proceed with the order. It's moved by councillor McNeil, related to sector.
Second.
Councillor McLeod, all in favor?
Aye. Sixty seven Grand Street, Netwood, Scotia. Um, we received a complaint in the summer of twenty twenty three, special was completed. There's a dwelling and an old barn on the property. There's also a significant amount of junk debris on the property. Property again was posted with the date and time of this meeting on November twenty ninth. Notice for this was also sent registered mail to the owner from the mailing address on property on mine. So you can see, uh, there's a significant structural defect in the dwelling. It seems as though the foundation is either letting go or sinking. Um, the exterior walls are bulging out. You can see the back where the, most of the debris, there's debris piled up along the house and along the back of it. You can see at the top, the reflection of the walls, the structural integrity of the walls bulging out. Again, on the front, in the area of foundation where it's looking like it's letting go and the exterior wall is bulging out. This is the corner of it where the foundation seems to be, uh, detaching from the, the structural walls of the dwelling. This is at the end of the driveway. There's a dilapidated shed in there and just a pile of debris and junk. There is a significant amount of, uh, firewood on the property that we have no issue with. Um, there's also a vehicle on the property that is safety and registered that we have no issue with. Um. So the main volume here is abandoned and it's dilapidated, significant courses of structural elements are in question. Building is leaning in several spots due to the foundation and structural deficiencies and the accessory buildings in dilapidated condition shows signs of significant damage. So it meets the municipal government act, is it in erroneous dilapidated condition, such a state of non repair can no longer suitable for human habitation. Property in slightly relationship to neighboring properties due to the exterior finish of the building not being maintained and there's accumulation of debris in the air. So our recommendation is that the dwelling is severely dilapidated, building meets municipal government act definition is dangerous and slightly. Therefore, our recommendation is the order to remedy the condition. The order be a demolition order issued from the council to the owners. The order should state with the owners that the buildings are prepared to be demolished and agreed to be removed and disposed of in the appropriate manner within thirty days. Property on fail is to comply and will complete the same recovery cost.
So many, what about?
None.
Oh, yeah.
So that's recommendation from, uh, Mr. Justifying Commission in regards fifty seven Grand Street.
Sixty.
Sixty seven, pardon me. Uh, so need a motion to proceed with the order.
It was hard work, uh, and there's a caretaker that received the letter and mentioned to him that his concern was his vehicle firework. There's no issue with that. Um, but, uh, the caretaker was in residence, that it's, it needs to be. Yes, she did her due diligence of getting it out of the conditions that was in.
So we need a motion to proceed. Thank you, Deputy Lord. Do we have a second, a second councillor in all favor?
Aye.
Under your mind, motion's carried. Proceed with the order, please.
Just to clarify, gentlemen, it's a ding.
Oh, so say please.
That the other property that was in question has been rescheduled for January.
Correct.
There's no other property seen at second minute. Thank you very much for that, sir, for the question.
Quick question, the property on the Trans Canada, but, uh, I, I see there, there is, uh, uh, excavator there.
Yes, I actually, uh, got an email, received an email this morning that they had successfully cleared the cover. I didn't get that till last year, so I'm going to stop, I'm gonna go back, take a peek. Um, once the conditions are suitable, that order has expired, so the tender's been aborted, everything is ready to go. It's just a matter of being able to access the, it's not, so thank you. If those conditions permit, we'll be calling to.
There was also one that I had, uh, brought up before that's in River Venice and, uh, trailers are like when we have rainstorms or whatever, they've been floating like, and it's still, they're still there, but it's.
If you wanna shoot me an email, I'm not familiar with the property, but.
Yeah, John Baines.
Okay, yeah, I recently just taken over all the files.
Okay, yeah, I recently just taken over all the files. We're we're looking at.
Okay.
Just maintaining uh, a better up to date system with them. So if there's any questions or anything in your districts, um, under point of contact, you can give me a call, shoot me an email and uh.
All these requests, email online?
Yeah, just on each of your side.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Very good. Excellent, Sean. Next item is the A O report that's been circulated to you. Oh, I'm sorry. I got uh, down too quickly. You uh, minutes have been circulated to you for the meeting of November fourteen. Twenty twenty three, you had a chance to review those minutes. Were there any errors or omissions from the minutes? Good. We provided for your information. There are no errors or omissions. Ask for a motion to approve the minutes as circulated. Councilor Warden selected by Councilor Longbow, all in favor.
Aye.
Under my motions carried. Who will look at the C A O's report covering all the items?
Yeah, so you've all received it, so just want to go over just a few. Scotia. Good, good job. I know Scotia Department, no. Uh, U A R B has approved an interest waiver for water utility customers for the July to December twenty twenty three time period. So the interest will be waived uh, due to uh, meter installation issues. Uh, that we had along the way. So we thank everyone for their patience and we will be uh, waiving interest on that period. Uh, okay, so in D one, Hopla Year area, uh, there was some issues with water bills over there. And there was an insert that was sent in the bills to inform users of the issues that there were, so that went out. Uh, D two, Perla, you had asked about some leaning poles. Uh, mentioned leaning poles in your area, so we've contacted Nova Scotia Power on that and they're going to look into that. Um, also we've contacted Brent and Google about an N S H A meeting, but that is now postponed for a bit. Uh, Perla, you had questioned uh, the visitor information center washroom uh, update. And we are in the process of developing an infographic on all the washrooms that we have and what we have funded and what we have spent in different areas. Um, but just related to this one, the V I C one, it is open twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. The accessible one over there, the other two may not be, but the accessible one is. Um, our report is being done and becoming our all washrooms that Victoria County has invested in. Um, and it's going to be released at the same time as the infographic, which is probably going to be January. So we'll be talking about funds that all the good money that that has been put into all the discussions we've had about washrooms. Over the last uh, several years. Um, the dog park, uh, those questions about uh, development of a dog park. Dan and his team are looking into some best practices and are drawing on some other provincial dog parks that are around the province. And they're going to be coming back to council with a proposal soon, um, like on the best locations, the best uh, usage of them, stuff like that. So that will be coming. Um, so we'll see if there's something that we're going to talk to the village about and also about uh, some dog park in. Possibly in the village. Um, D three, there was a streetlight request that had been sent in for McDonald until Hilltop Protection.
Right.
There is like a real long, as Councilperson knows. Uh, I mean, I'm putting my question, but there's a very big wait time for streetlights right now, just so you know. So if you do notice that your streetlight is up, let me know. But if you notice that it's been a while, also let me know. But I have contact with Nova Scotia Power, but it is, it's a long time.
I was lucky enough to be in town last week with the doing a site, signing for that streetlights. So it is well worth it to the site. They know you're today.
Correct.
No, I don't believe so.
It's not a, I just think.
No, I know, and I think that Councilor Doffey and I have had issues with Nova Scotia Power going inspections, uh, hoping they have power and so on. Um, I think it's time we we invite them again to uh, lay out these concerns. And and Steph, if you could kind of keep the timeline, like when that was first put in, it's at least two months. And you had, you know, I don't know the exact date, but if we have this intervention. Because it's not only streetlights, it seems to be practically everything. The situation I had, the inspection was done, they were told to find the hookup that took place within ten days. It didn't. Then they were told they were on a list, the person's phone, and they had no record of being on a list. And apparently the person needs that uh, for an occupancy permit, which somehow affects their mortgage. I'm not, you know. So this person is all tied up because Nova Scotia Power. It it's not even, they're in their own bedroom. So maybe, you know, in the new year, we could invite them again.
Uh, you want to make a, make a motion and then you can ask the C A O to, or Steph.
Do I ring an hour or?
Ring that.
Yeah, uh, I would move that we invite representatives of Nova Scotia Power to a council session uh, at their convenience.
We have a second, the second section by the Deputy Ward, all in favor.
Aye.
Under my motions carried.
Great. Uh, okay, so in tourism, so the tourism team is working on preparing an update for recreation for um. Uh, for twenty twenty three for upcoming council session or the council committee hall that is going to. Uh, I think it's committee hall, committee hall, yes. Um, so working on some big things, hopefully um, we'll get some exciting information in January. Um, in our trails department, so met with D N R R related to the existing trail work that is currently delayed. Um, we're exploring next steps to bring this section back into our work plan and due to weather, rightly not to continue any more work until. Spring twenty twenty four relates to that. And so yeah, Dan and his tourism recreation team will be coming uh, to council. Committee Hall in January. Um, community development. Beacon Bedeck Community Planning Project had the first public information session in November and will be hosting a virtual session on Tuesday, December twelfth. At six P M. This session will be recorded and shared as a viewable video for anyone who cannot make the session on the twelve. Um, so uh, these four and this team together for the the Beacon Bedeck or the 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 Bedeck team is being pulled together for that. Um, as I had mentioned in finance, uh, Alex is looking to have a budget meeting early in twenty twenty four. We're going to start with capital like we did last year. I think it was a good approach. And then our way to operational, so we'll be setting a meeting date out for that early in twenty twenty four. In public works, uh, just to let you know, we had two surplus assets that we had put out uh, to tender and both have been uh, awarded. To tenders that came in. Our Dingwall Water Tower is about a third of the way built right now. So we had a few delays, but hopefully we're we're off to the races there now on that. Um, and in economic development, uh, just a couple of things offshore wind information session that was held here last week, Parker, I believe. Uh, it was very well attended. It was probably close to twenty people that were here. Twenty four people and uh, so very informative. And Parker will be coming to council or to committee the whole in January also to give an update on E D R. In our communications, there's a different way of live streaming today. It's now going to be on YouTube rather than on Facebook. Um, and it will also be available on the website and YouTube and we will have mic for phones working. In in a new way for the new setup. We're just trying to get the best um, system that we can. You may need your laptops for it, so just letting you know, we'll have some training on how to how to get the sound related to this also. Um, and congratulations to the new Victoria reporter that is in town now. Uh, we have uh, an advertising opportunity in that in every two weeks. And we encourage everyone to support that paper because we know our residents like a paper copy of things. A couple of other things, uh, Farver, you had brought up about uh, an ecology action plan, coastal protection. Instead of a program that was going on. It seemed strange to me, but it happened at the same time. I received another proposal from a McAllister Craig. On a climate readiness project. It'd be very similar to your project. Um, it doesn't seem like this McAllister Craig one would have would need as much staff time. Um, they told me it would be about. Three days a year possibly for the other project. Um, and this other McAllister Craig one, um, right now has support from Inverness and Richmond. On that project, so it may be more of a bigger, a bigger one. So they are asking for municipal support on that. They're looking for letter of support on that project. So that would be something that I'd like your input on. Um, if I was making a recommendation, I'd probably go with the McAllister Craig one. Just because it would be less staff time, seems to be similar. The brief, the outlines that they sent for both of them seem to be quite similar.
Who is McAllister Craig?
It is a coastal protection company of some type and there is no.
No financial impact?
No financial impact, staff time, which is uh, E M O time.
McAllister and Craig are an international consulting firm that builds tomorrow's resilience today. Our teams work here in the home world to build local disaster emergency management capacity.
And the guy that I've been talking to, Adam McAllister, says that he spent a lot of his summers here in this area, so he's very vested in it. So that would be something that um, I.
Prove and proceed with the. You you're okay with that too, Bear? Because it's usually.
Yeah, oh, I am having a meeting on Thursday with the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipality Advisory people on climate change and halifax. I mean, I don't know, it's something that I wouldn't mind mentioning to them to know if they have any feedback on.
My suggestion is that is to accept them today. It'd be public information. So if Deputy Ward has made a motion that we accept their proposal.
Sure.
Seconded by Councilor Cloud, all in favor.
Aye.
Under my notice, and we just received a brief description of the project here today, so thank you.
Uh, also, community meals plus program. So there was a report sent out on that from Jen Ripley. Uh, related to the meals that council uh, put in the budget last year for supporting. Uh, she said that funding is not required for the next two years. She's received funding from an alternate source. Uh, so they will be able to fund the same amount of meals. However, uh, there is a need. And if we are interested in funding more spots, uh, they will be more than pleased to discuss that. So is that something the council would like, uh, Jen, would you comment?
The case they are mining.
Okay, so we'll ask her to come and talk to council.
How many way in this they have?
Yeah, okay. Um, okay, and that's all I have.
Just one item that just came across that you didn't get yet, but uh, just to notify the record signs from seventy. Kilometers, so.
I went through it today. It says flu.
That's great. And I think we should, uh, I think we ought to be sending the indicator indicating that we're pleased that they agreed to the order. So that's good news today and it's just an update.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm just regarding uh, for Parker about the business plan for V C T, uh, getting in.
I do have a carry to do uh, templates from other areas, so we're working on that done kind of early in the new year. We didn't have a firm deadline yet, but.
No, but we like, we have A K M and then maybe, yeah, the beginning of the year because we need to. To move on.
Yeah.
Just a question, did they leave the uh, speed indicator sign there?
Yeah, that's my observation.
Yes, it is.
I think that's more effective than than any.
Exactly.
But I've noticed that some places they don't, they leave them that they do.
You know, and in saying that, maybe that's what we should do is ask them to ensure that they leave that.
That they're spacing, yeah.
That's a good point. So do you want to make that a motion? So just so.
Okay, uh, I uh, move that we contact the Department of Works to uh, maintain the uh, flashing speed indicators. Uh, before the, for the, the orders, probably one or two.
Do you have a second? Yeah. Second thing. Councilor Cloud, all in favor?
Aye.
Under my motions carried, we're sending. Bill line.
In the end, question or comments? Yes, sir. Uh, it was a few councils back. I was just wondering about the R C N P. Were they ever known by them? Were they going to come and give us a little update?
They are, yes. Yep, they did. And so I contacted him and he's preparing something. Uh, but I will um, send him another note as a reminder, but yes, he was asking what you'd be looking for, some stats. Sort of similar to what we had in the past.
Thank you.
What about uh, Department of Education or Cape Breton, Victoria Regional Center for Education? Are they coming in in the new year?
Uh, so we are constantly sending them letters. Um. I can't remember if I was supposed to ask them to come to council and if I was, I did ask them, but I have not received their response. No, unless Steph has anything planned for them.
We just sent letters. They're very good to communicate that. We usually get something back from right away with any concern that are probably asked, but.
But I mean.
Want them to come to council?
Why shouldn't they? They're, I mean, we're paying them lots of money.
So they're school born?
Sure.
They uh, they've been very good to attend with us, so yeah, I prefer them to inform.
Hey, I move that we invite the Center for Education to come to one of our council meetings to give us an update on. Schooling, busing, et cetera.
Okay, good second. Second by Councilman Beal, all in favor?
Aye.
Under my notice, motions carried. Anything else? In regards to C A O's report? Very good. We're going to take a ten minute recess. We'll reconvene at four. We'll reconvene at four.
So welcome back, Councilor. December eleventh. We are on our agenda. We are going to deal with district concerns, and we will start with Councilor Patterson, please.
Thank you, Warden. I think I sent this email to everyone earlier, just briefly highlighted. The Rosberry Mean Park, which is managed by the Rosberry Storage Society, is a focal part of the community. It has a boat launch, outdoor means, walking trails, swimming here and picnic area. It has alternative panels, and it also has events on July first and later. The work needs some upgrading after all these years, and they received, the Storage Society received the quote for the work earlier, and it finally, when they got a contractor, they had difficulty getting a contractor to do this kind of work, the quote had risen by about fifty percent. So it's specialized work, but the contractor is willing to start it very soon, work over the winter, and have it completed by next spring. So they, with the over quote, with the quote being much higher than expected, they are short of funds for it. So I'd like to move to take ten thousand dollars from my District Five budget payable to the Rosberry Storage Society.
So that was again four, four thousand?
Ten thousand.
From your
District budget.
District budget.
Now, Alan can verify that I won't be over on.
Merry Christmas.
I mean, Frazier's
Not after today. All right, so you heard the motion from Councilor Patterson. Second favor. It's been seconded by Deputy Warden on favor.
Aye.
Say, Warden, just a secondary motion, and because the ten thousand may not cover all the excess cost. This, I'm kind of phrasing this as an insurance policy. This will be kind of a backup. They are actively looking for more contributions, whether it's corporate or private or whatever. But I would like to move that if necessary, up to five thousand dollars from a special project fund be made payable to the Rosberry Storage Society. And my intention is, knowing if that is necessary, to bring that back to council. Maybe I wouldn't even have to make a motion today, just notice a motion.
I would prefer that to do this special project and separate compensation.
Yeah, and if necessary, I can pick it back later.
Yeah, for reformation purposes.
That's about it. Most of you are probably aware of the homicide situation in Big Berdore. There was very, there was some media coverage. Some of the media coverage had it in Millville. It was not in Millville, it was in Big Berdore. And I haven't heard too many comments about it, but some people are, I guess, shocked that these things happen in our neighborhoods, you know? It's not downtown Detroit or New York or whatever. It's a small rural community, and we had these crimes being committed, you know, practically next door sometimes. So I guess it's just the nature of a changing world, and we're going to have to learn to accept it. On that note, as our police advisor to committee meeting.
So we tried to have a meeting. We could not get a forum for it. So we have not met lately. And so then the next step was to have RCMP come into council.
Yeah, exactly. And I wonder if we should go back to the system where we had the RCMP come, I don't know if it was quarterly or semi-annually or whatever, just to fill us in on what's going on and for us to give some feedback to them. You know, I think it's important that we know the work they're doing and what we see in the community. It's very interesting. I watched documentary last night, Philip Woodrow on that. Very interesting CBC documentary. And the police officer on that show said, the public has to come to us. He said, we can't know everything, you know? We can't, we can't cover everything. The public has to let us know what they see and what they hear. And I think that's an important message to get out there to people. Most people will take the attitude, I don't want to get involved. But maybe if someone does get involved, sometimes it could prevent some of these things do some. Anyway, that's mine.
Thank you.
Today's lecture over.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate the comments. Councilor Orton?
Just to Frazier's comment there, June twenty seventh was the last meeting that we had, and we couldn't get enough people. There was four of us here. District concerns. Leanne, I asked at the committee of the hall about road sharing signs. Did you look into that comment?
Did we, do we have? I think I dropped a ball on that one, Jessica.
Okay, that's fine. Just, you know, look into that.
Yeah, sorry.
No?
I was asking how it works. Sorry.
Okay, I'd like to move, make a motion that I take one thousand dollars, not like Frazier's, one thousand dollars to go to the North Smokey Food Bank.
Can I second for that, please?
Second.
Deputy Warden, second for that. On favor? I'm very minded. Motion's carried.
I have some public works, but I will forward that to Mr. McDonald. And if I don't see my residents, constituents of District Seven, I'd like to wish them all happy holidays. And please check on neighbors because Christmas is not always happy, happy for some people, and some seniors are lonely too. So just check in with your neighbors. But wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
That's what I said. Thank you very much. Councilor Long?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the blanket exercise again. I mentioned it at the last Cow meeting. I met the ladies from Indigenous Advisor Team at the TWIC conference, and I did reach out to her to say that we would like more information that I could send out to council. And she did reply, but not with any more information at this time. I think it's just busy for the remainder of this year, and I'm sure she'll be back in touch with me in the new year. And I'd like to send condolences to Denelton Castle and her family and all of the Castles on the loss of her husband, John Castle, and that would be Kenny Castle's brother from English Town. And I just wanted to mention that, I guess it was already mentioned, that council is live streaming on YouTube, and then it's on the county website, but not live, right? Is that right? It just gets transferred then the recording to the county website? Okay, and I'd also like to wish all my constituents Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Happy Hanukkah and all that. And that's it for me.
Thank you, and I certainly want to acknowledge Barbara, Miss Dan, and Vivian Brock for your meeting that she hosted with Nova Scotia Power, as well attended by constituents and residents in her area and some from outside the area. Very agile horse to you, and well done. I just want to reference that in the council meeting.
Thank you. I'm glad you reminded me of that because at that meeting, like, we wanted Nova Scotia Power to come and talk about what the emergency preparedness plan was all, was going to be, and tell the community, and then it turned out that that's the county's responsibility and Lyle Donovan. So I would like to hold a meeting with Lyle Donovan back in the community and ask him to tell us what the, because a lot of people that live in the area, the flood plain of what they would like to know, like, and not just find out that day, like, when they get a call, they want to know ahead of time. So thank you for reminding them.
Yeah, and you can, with the request to Leanne, or Leanne, or
Lyle.
Thank you.
Senior's man, sorry, for Lyle. He was, he was in at the meeting as well.
He's, he's great, very informative.
Thank you. And we'll leave that with you and CAO, Councilor McNeil.
Yeah, thank you, Warden. I don't know, just FYI for Public Works, I want to thank Public Works for repairs to the Gibson aircraft in Jamestown that violated The volunteer did a repair job there. It's a temporary fix. I hope there'll be money allotted every year for that. Shoulder still need work on in the area in the three weeks prior to the fixing. There was at least four vehicles were damaged in that area. Snowplow in the area was not ready for the first snowfall. The transmission was broken, and they knew about it in early summer. And it wasn't repaired for the snowfall, the fall of residents. Actually, the roads were in bad shape for a couple of days. And there was an accident on and off of the road. I was assured by Steve McDonald that another plant would be placed in the area next Friday, or this Friday, last Friday. I don't know whether it was or not, as of yet. And the parks came for the transmission already, so hopefully that will be repaired within the next couple of weeks. Actually, I'd like a letter to be sent to Deputy Minister and Steve McDonald, asking why these pieces of equipment were not ready for the beginning of winter operations. I'll make that a motion.
Do we have a second for that, please?
Second it.
Second, Councilor Long, sorry. All in favor?
Also, there was patch job down in Grass Cove to a number of potholes. But basically, they only filled the half the potholes. There's still a hole there with asphalt. I don't know what, what they were thinking. It still needs work though. So, it's better than what it was, but I guess it still needs work. So, I'm in touch with Steve McDonald for that too. Municipal wise, broadband delays. I was in contact with Kevin Klein about the issues. No work has been done over in the Iona area. That was supposed to be completed December 31st. He says, and in your area too, I asked him.
September.
Yeah. And he said that the delays were make-ready delays, and Nova Scotia Power are looking into power poles in the area and kind of going there. The new date for the Iona area is the end of May. So, they're updating the maps on the site and everything. So, look on the site to see. No.
When's the new date?
At the end of May, yeah, in the Iona area. But they updated the maps too on the Bill Nova Scotia site. Also, I'd like, over the past year, I'd like to thank all the work that the staff has done. I know it's been a challenge this last year with weather issues and waste collection and new water meters and rates, policy bylaw issues, tax collection and sales, maintenance on this courthouse, and trails housing funding, office staff dealing with council issues and everything else. So, I want to recognize what they have done over the year. And I know at times, we don't relay, but we do appreciate what staff has done over the last year.
Thank you, Paul. I can tell you, staff are very excited for all the new stuff that is going on, because we kind of, we feel that there's actually things happening. So, I agree with you, but council is behind things that we're doing also, so it's appreciated.
And I'd like to wish Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Well said, sir. Councilor McDonald, what do you need?
I just have a few things, Warden. Thank you. Some public works, this was forwarded to Steve McDonald. He's a resident. I reached out and referred to, he lives on the North Side Branch Road. It's a road that, that goes off the North Side Road, which is just in Deambol, Masby Bay. And he's looking to have some maintenance done to the road. Realizing this is in the winter season, then it probably wouldn't be looked at till the spring. But there's three full-time residents who live on that road. There's culverts that are needed. There's gravel and things that have been neglected for many years. I think these residents have just moved back in the area in the last couple of years. I mean, they might have played in there, but I hadn't heard back from Mr. McDonald in regard to that. But I'd just like the minister to reflect that it was brought up at council. Secondly, there's a, looking for a culprit repair in St. Margaret's Village. And the problem is, it's in front of the home of William McKinnon. So, when I go to Nova Scotia mapping system, it shows the specific address, and it's not. It doesn't exist. That's what they're telling me. I go to the TIR number, ask them to say that the address does not exist. I assure them that they're there, because I know driveways have. So, I'm gonna resend that again to Public Works to see if they can look at that and maybe help alleviate that problem. And that would be it for Public Works. There's not really any district concerns. I would like to take one thousand dollars from my District 8 budget for the North Smokey Food Bank as well. It's a great way, I think, to end up where I have left my budget. Basically, I really believe that, because as we all know, there are people that have hardships this time of year. You know, if we can help them any way we can, I think it's important. And like I also, I wish my constituents of District 8 a Merry Christmas and all the very best in the coming year.
Thank you very much. I have a motion for a thousand dollars for the improvement. Second by Deputy Warden, all in favor?
Aye.
Deputy Warden, good for you.
Just a couple of things. First of all, thank you to Councilor McDonald and Councilor Oregon for the thousand dollars in Food Bank. I also gave one thousand back in September. But I wanted to acknowledge a walk that happened this weekend in the municipal area. It was called the Five Kilometer Santa Claus Walk. And basically, a bunch of the ladies in the area, plus some young people to join them this year and stuff, do a walk, and they raised money. And I believe it was like eighty-nine hundred dollars, I believe, they raised this year. And it's an amazing amount. I put it all over towards the Food Bank. But I just like to public and acknowledge, especially Debbie Wong, who works at the Fresh Mart in Inish. She's one of the key people in that, and they've done an amazing job over the last couple of years. So, just congratulations to all of them. I also want to thank Public Works for the repairs to the bridge in Inish Harbor. They actually got it paved before winter set in, so I was quite impressed with that, that they did the work and it's been done. So, that was great to see. I have two motions tonight. First one is, I had a residence call me again, and this has been an ongoing issue for years, and some conversations between the other one and, but what do we do with hazardous waste? Paint cans, fluorescent bulbs and stuff. And I know we tried last year. We had a group come in and it wasn't very successful. Not many people brought their stuff in. But what residents are being told when they go to the landfill is that, no, we can't take them. So, okay, well, what do I do with them? The response that we're giving now is that we can try to take them to CBRM to see if they will take them, which is great, but what if you get there and they don't take them? And how do they know you're from Victoria, Canada, or whatnot? But this has been ongoing for years, and I think it's time that maybe we have staff, I'll make a motion that staff research the issue and develop a plan to accept hazardous materials at our waste management facilities. And hopefully, maybe they can make arrangements with CBRM that maybe if we collect, and then we deliver them to CBRM, maybe we can make some financial arrangements or whatever. But anyway, I would like to make a motion that we do a little bit more research and develop a plan for looking after hazardous waste.
Second that. Second, Councilor Long, all in favor?
Aye.
Country mine it.
The second number two. And the last one is, I'm gonna read this one. Sorry for being so wordy there, sir. Hi, Councilor Larry Dopmy, move that we send a letter to CEO of Gulf North, Sean Evans, the Parks Canada CEO, Ron Hallman, and the Federal Environment Minister, Stephen Gilgo, I believe it is, plus a competent RMP, Jaime Patis, asking for confirmation of plans for the Celtic Lodge, and in particular, the main lodge at the Celtic. The Celtic Lodge is an iconic property in Nova Scotia. It deserves to be preserved for future generations. Take that from the Parks mandate. We are hearing that the main lodge will be closed for two years to allow for road repairs and renovations. This is totally understandable. I understand why we're doing this. But what are the plans for the main lodge during the two years and afterwards? So, are they gonna do renovations? Are they gonna put staff in them for the next year or two while they do renovate? This is all rumor, like, there's nothing. Really having a hard time getting the actual answers. But if they are putting staff up there, are they just gonna put staff there? Not do any renovations, because the buildings are getting quite run down. These rooms are critical to the tourism capacity in Inish area. Recently, we seen the laundry facilities close at the Celtic, and now the main lodge is closing. The lack of maintenance on the facilities is evident, and more investment is required. What are the plans moving forward for this iconic property? I'll make that a motion.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second, Councilor Oregon, all in favor?
Aye.
Country mine it.
And Merry Christmas to all residents of Victoria.
Councilor McLeod?
I don't have anything to report, because I want to thank everybody. This year was a little difficult for me, and this support was amazing to give you today. I just want to say, my skin was clean from the residents there asking. I was just, every six months, I've moved on to three years, right? But I, I just want to say thank you to everybody, and my residents, and the community. You guys, you helped me a lot. And I second, Councilor, change your neighbors, and enjoy family, and live day by day, on the way into the future. Anyway, happy holidays to everyone.
Good. It's great having you back, and I'd like to congratulate you. It's been a spell of which you continue good health. Seriously, great having you back. I just have four quick things, Deputy Warden, going into the Engage Nova Scotia. I have a program right now. In order to be part of, it's called the Engage Nova Scotia, the Law of Life Municipal Investment Plan, I sent the correspondence around in regards to that plan. What they are requesting, if you want to join that plan, it is fifty cents per resident. So, it would be for us around thirty-six to four thousand dollars. There's a lot of information that you can glean from that site. It can be used by both the residents themselves as well. That's what we established. So, I'd like to make a motion that we provide that kind of funding, or request to join that municipal investment plan. Does that motion have a second for that motion? Second, Councilor McLeod, all in favor? Country mine it. Motion's passed. Thank you very much. And just while all of the villagers here today didn't want necessarily to bring it up, but there is a fire located in ninety-nine Old Margaret Road. We dug it up this summer. We were kind of hoping that some of the major patches, it was done from other excavations and water lines and sewer lines, that when those locations were paved, this location will be paved. It was not. It's getting late in the year. It kind of accesses some private property. So, I'd just like a note sent to the village as to what their plans are to remediate that particular spot.
So, are you asking them to replace the fire?
No, just to repair the road and the driveway.
What's the address?
Ninety-nine Old Margaret Road. So, it needs to be resurfaced. Paying has to be resurfaced there. By December 13th, I was from ten till eleven-thirty, I will have office hours here for my monthly. I just want to mention too, I want to thank other councillors, all other councillors that contributed money for the light up of life in CBC. I'll probably drop that money down to them either once the check is made, or make money coming down there. I want to thank you for that. Just in light, we are coming to Christmas, and some of the others have, councillors have mentioned groups and individuals in their communities that have been bringing down it above and beyond, and they're facing tough times in every community in Inish County. And the Vidae Clients Club has had at least three events where they raised funds for to help people at Christmas time. So, I'd just like to send a note to them thanking them very much for the contributions that they've made to this community, and I agree to Victoria County this time of year round as well. So, I think that's all I have.
Mr. Warden, you just reminded me, I have office hours at each of my own on December 21st, from ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve in the morning.
Ten to twelve in the morning.
So, we'll capture that in the last act to put those notes on the municipal calendar. And I too, I want to be, I mean, my residents, but all staff and all residents of my district and community staff. I'd like to wish them a very good, happy holidays as well. And echo Councilor McNeil's very relevant points of support from staff over the last year. Really, it's been, we've had our ups and downs, and started scaling with issues. But we've been very fortunate, very staffed to support us as we move forward, so. With that, the last two items I want to bring up, not necessarily as district concerns, but as municipal concerns, I asked this document be forwarded to you. We are going to dedicate one of our video, the whole meetings in January in regards to bylaws and policies. So, I want you to take a look at that document. Make sure that you're familiar with it when we have a conversation in January, so that people can streamline. And we want to tidy up, eliminate, or update both bylaws and policies. So, that gives staff a clearer indication of what our plans are. And the last thing I just want to mention, our strategic plan we did last February. I also want to take a look at that in January. We're halfway through the second half of our tenure as council. So, I would ask you to take a look at that. We have to make some decisions in regards to some of the ideas that we identified as priorities, and whether or not they are still relevant for the final year of our term. So, I would ask you to take a look at that document as well. And again, it's going to be a discussion, so please have a look.
The previous one, Warden, on bylaws and policy.
Yes.
You say you sent that?
Pardon me?
Did you say you sent that already?
If I haven't, it will be sent out today. It's just a short list like this, so I haven't sent it out.
Yeah, that'll be close.
Okay, because we just looked at them Thursday and Friday, so.
Okay, yeah.
If you didn't receive it, that's my fault. I've had it, I've had it here. I want to take a look at it and see how much work was involved. And we definitely want to take a look at some of the bylaws. Take four or five, and then make sure we're cleaning them up, tidying them up for our use and for use of future councils. That would be taken.
Yeah, no problem.
So, we want to send it up to council, or?
You can send it. It's probably best if you send it there. So, I think that's basically it for me. We have just a couple more items that are on the agenda. They are motions for confirmation to resolution. So, I'll turn it over to Leanne. She's looking for a motion to discuss opting in or out of extended EPR responsibility.
Yeah, so, the presentation that was done by Public Works a while ago on EPR. It, we, and there was a recommendation that was brought forward also by Public Works that it was recommending that we do opt into the EPR program. If we don't, there is an extremely high quality control on it, where they will allow less than two percent variance in bags. So, the recommendation is that it's voted that we do adopt the EPR program. And the decision has to be made by a council through, through council by January 1st. We have no. So, your time is present, because we've had the information to look at for the last two months.
Is there a cost associated with that? I mean, with that, just to refresh my memory, please?
Yeah, we're not exactly sure yet, but what it will be doing is, they will be collecting blue bags. We don't know if it's going to be through us, or, so they will be collecting blue bags.
So, we need a motion that whether we opt in or out, and assuming that the recommendation would be that we opt in?
It was Public Works' recommendation that we, that we do opt in.
And we've had a chance to review, so what are, what's council's issues?
I made a motion that we opt in.
Opt in to the extended producer responsibility provincial program. Moved by Councilor Oregon. Do we have a second?
Second.
By Councilor McLeod, looking for the discussion and motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Country mine it. Motion's carried. Second one, motion to apply for municipal capital growth program.
Yeah, okay, so there is a pro, a new program that the province has offered this year. There is some money that is available for infrastructure and including water and wastewater. I know we're early into talking about this again. However, it is on council's priority list that we look at wastewater systems. I have an application that is done, and it needs a motion from council to, to. I have an application that is done and it needs a motion from council to 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 approve it. Before we send it in, it is due on December fifteenth, so we're getting close. So what it is, is it will fund fifty percent of your cost. We may get it, we may not, but if we don't apply, then we don't have a chance of getting the money.
It's for, also for buildings, it can be, right?
Yep.
For buildings as well?
Yep.
Yeah, and also to nonprofit organizations can also apply for that, is that correct?
I don't know with the municipal capital growth program.
Well, not the municipal one, but I think.
I'm only talking right now about the municipal cap. There is accessibility ones that are available for nonprofits. So this one here in particular, I would need a motion. And I'm looking for a motion that we apply for the municipal capital growth program to fund fifty percent funding of an English wastewater system with total possible funding of seven point three four seven million dollars.
I make a motion that we approve it and even though we're applying for the initial one, I don't think that means if we apply for the funds, we get the money, we can make a decision where it goes to. But if we don't apply for the funds, we'll never get the money.
Exactly.
So at this time, I make a motion that we do approve and put the application in.
Let's second. Second, Counselor McNeil, all in favor?
But yes, but there are other, there are other applications that are out there. And some of them, if they are available for nonprofits, we are kind of choosing to opt out of them because there's other groups that could use them as well. More, we don't want to, we don't want to give it if others have a right for them.
Thank you.
That's just for the, this is for the water, right?
Waste water.
Waste water.
Yes.
Sewer.
Sewer in the?
Yes. We have a pre-designed gun on that one. Yeah, this one was one that we we had pre-designed. We're going to, we're going to apply so we can get some money.
Yeah, no, I'm good, just to know where it is.
Yeah.
You curious?
Thank you.
We have a committee report from Counselor Patterson.
Yeah, very quickly.
Is there any correspondence?
It's all incentive and all have, all the requests of this incentive are.
Any questions with correspondence that was forwarded to you? I knew it was sent out, that's why I thought I should have something said, something new. Committee reports.
Yeah, very quickly, Warden. The Public Safety Advisory Committee of the N S F M met last Monday, the fourth of December, by our teams. And Patterson's housekeeping items and so on, the two issues that come out were a vulnerable person's registry, going back to what Jack said, this would more formalize it. And they are looking at, apparently there's a patchwork kind of across the province now. Some have, some don't, some fire departments do, some don't. They want to kind of standardize it. Nova Scotia Power has one, for example. If you are oxygen, I think you can register with Nova Scotia Power and they will compensate somehow. But apparently, they don't share that with anybody else. I mean, you know, it's a mismatch right now. So the committee is just looking at that. And the second one, and I don't know how many municipalities have been letters, but it's probably close to twenty. Rural cell phone coverage for emergency preparedness, and we all know the issue there. You know, it's the same thing with the cell service, just not being available. And landlines not being available, if we have fiber. Going back to Counselor McNeil, talking to Mr. Klein, I believe that was more on the internet.
Sure.
Yeah, but cell service is combined with that in a way. So those are the two, two issues that the committee is looking at at present. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Counselor McNeil?
Just one thing, at Gala Dinner down in Sydney for the Two Eye Seeing Conference, I was presented with the ego feather from the second committee, and I want to thank them for that. It's a great honor for for me and it was kind of a motion to pay for that. So I just want to send a letter of thanks to Stephanie for giving me that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you. It speaks to the value that you brought to that. The value of the knowledge and expertise that you brought to that committee. Any other committee reports?
I just wanted to mention, again, Paul had mentioned about broadband. And there was a announcement made very recently, and they said that in St. Anne's, that now it's moved in South Haven, South Gush and St. Anne's area, it's been moved to to between August twenty twenty four and October twenty twenty four for that area. And there was a Bull and Green, New Campbellton, New Harris is moved till September twenty twenty four. And they did say that part of the reason is because of Fiona and all of the aftermath cleaning up that they had to move things around. They did say that some of those places, individual houses could get hooked up in the meantime, like even if they're in that area. But that the entire area is scheduled for that time. But if if broadband's going by, they are doing individual houses here and there. I just wanted to say that. So public, come here.
Thank you very much. In regards, well, before we get to public. Just two weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago, we had some significant damage to our small boardroom over here, the council boardroom. And I just ask Leanne, she can update some any more damage or any more, or any other repairs that have been done to this building in the last month.
Yep, so we closed down one day, two weeks ago, related to water coming in and flowing through the entranceway downstairs from the ceiling, with obvious holes in the ceiling. We have been trying to patch them and find them over the last few years. So that's just one other thing. We have some issues in the bottom of the building and we have some issues on the top of the building. So we were able to get a company to come in and do a patch job on, we've had a patch job done a few times over the last few months related to this area. But we did have another patch job over the area last week. And it was before the large rain last week. It was able to withstand that. If anybody looked in the little boardroom in there, it looks like a swimming pool set up in there for capture of water. We have a makeshift gutter system that is going out the window. We kind of girded the whole room in there, thanks to our guys. And so, so far, so good. Knock on wood, nothing came in through the last rainstorm. So we are scheduling to do more work on the full piece of the roof over there when after the snow is done. So.
Thank you. And I know I mentioned this several times already, but we perceive ongoing compliments on the job folks did on decorating a front of a building. And then the spot that's again, that's a long step.
Any questions from the public?
I don't believe so. There's nothing that is listed there. There's no, no ability to do that.
All right, your last, thank Counselor Oregon for.
Thank you.
We have one to adjourn. We are. I'll move my counsel from the air.